The joyful noise of chatter. It's so great. Welcome everyone to our September meeting. We will call to order beginning over here with Jeff.
Jeff Handley.
Joanne O'Brien.
Alyssa Tracy.
Becky Fless.
Tony B.
Linda Caputo.
Ella Crook.
Janelle McKinnon.
Megan Carlson.
Michelle Tucker.
Administrative staff.
Katie Gould, Superintendent.
Abe Doss, Steve, Facility Director.
Josh Fahar, Adolde Director.
Sarah Bolden, Director of Special Services.
Chris Levine, Principal at L E R.
Angela Hardy, Director of Curriculum.
Edgy Dugan, Principal at Riverview Community School.
Shree Poole, Principal at H T.
Beth Drilife, Principal of Consumer Management School.
Andrea Dish, Business Manager.
Carrie McGuire, Director of Technology.
Let's stand for the Budget Agent.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you want to read the script?
So we're at the public comment section of our meeting. Let's see, so we have a pre-public comment period script that we've shared in the past and I'll share it again now. So we're about to convene into the public comment period of our meeting. State law in Maine requires a public comment item on agendas of a full meeting of the school board. Please note that the public comment period is not designed to be a discussion. Accordingly, please do not expect the board to respond to your concerns and questions tonight. I also want to point out that under state and federal privacy laws, we are unable to entertain any comments or questions about school personnel, particular student matters, any rumors presented as facts that compromise the privacy of others, and any health or medical information protected as confidential. On any matter of concern, we would ask that you go through the appropriate administrative channels. We ask that speakers please address comments to the board directly rather than to the audience. Speakers may address items pertinent to tonight's meeting agenda or any topic related to the school unit's programs, policies, or operations. In the unlikely event the meeting becomes unruly, the board will recess the meeting and return once order has been restored. Finally, I want to remind everyone that you may submit written comments to the board in lieu of speaking during the public comment period if you so choose. Regarding the protocol for this evening, please review the Board pamphlet, Welcome to Our School Board Meeting. That provides a copy of policy B E D H, which is Public Participation at Board Meetings, which explicitly outlines the manner in which the public comment will be managed. Individuals who wish to speak are required to fill out the sign-in form. Those who wish to speak will be required to state their name and town or city of residence before beginning remarks. Consistent with policy B E D H, the board will hear public comments from residents and employees of the school unit first. If there is time remaining in the public comment period once all residents have had the opportunity to speak, the board will permit comments from non-residents. The board will now entertain public comments for 20 minutes. Each individual speaker is allotted two minutes. The individual time limits will be enforced so that as many members of the public who wish to speak may be allowed to do so. I believe we have a timekeeper?
Yes, sir. We have three people. Jen Scully.
Hello, my name is Jen Scully of Little Pittston. I have one child in the MSAD eleven school. As we begin the school year, I want to sincerely wish all of our students, our staff, our administrators, the very best. Over the past few weeks, I have driven by several of our schools and I noticed cars in the parking lot long before the first day of school. This night is a reminder of the countless hours our teachers and staff dedicate, often on their own time, preparing lessons and organizing classrooms and ensuring their students walk into a welcoming space. I've seen teachers in stores like Target spending their own money to purchase supplies and classroom materials. This level of commitment should not go unnoticed and we are grateful, we should be grateful to have this in our schools. We are incredibly fortunate to have educators and administrators who consistently go above and beyond for our children and I want them to know that they are deeply appreciated. And I also want to thank the board for its work on the cellphone policy and for allowing further review of it. Teaching students how to manage technology is essential and knowing when they have to put their phones away is going to serve them well in school, but can also in the workforce and beyond. At the same time, the teachers who will have to enforce this policy will get clear backing from their administrators and parents and along with consistent consequences for students who disregard the policy. Finally, I would like to thank the Policy Committee for reviewing board member conduct and ethics. Holding our leaders to high standards is vital to maintaining public trust. I do strongly encourage the board to adopt their policies that include meaningful consequences for violations. Without accountability, standards lose their power. Thank you again for your time and your commitment to our schools and I wish everyone a safe, successful, and inspiring school year. Thank you.
Ariel Sides.
Good evening, my name is Ariel Sides. I am from Randolph. I want to start off by sending a sincere thank you to Jeff, Alyssa, and Tony for showing up yesterday, supporting our students at the vigil that they so graciously put on for the victims of Minneapolis shooting. Your presence mattered. It told our students that they are seen, valued, and that they are worth showing up for. I'd also like to say hello and welcome to Katie Gould and thank you for your early support. Stepping into a new role is not easy and your willingness to listen and engage gives us hope for what this board can accomplish together. Welcome to the Thunderdome. Now, as we kick off the new school year, I am ready and willing to turn over a new leaf and have a fresh start. Like the season premiere after a messy cliffhanger, now we have an opportunity to write a better story this season. Let's be prepared to focus on every student, not just the ones who fit neatly into the margins of the page. This means safety, dignity, and opportunity for every learner in the district, including the most marginalized. That being said, I want to be clear. My openness for a fresh start does not mean a blank check. If policy is broken, if unethical choices are made, or if anyone tries to push measures that harm marginalized students, I will not stay quiet. As the modern philosopher Taylor Swift says, "I come back stronger than a ninety's trend." If our kids' rights or well-being are put at risk, I will become everyone's problem, loudly, persistently, and with receipts. But that's not the story that I want to see play out on this board this year. What I want and what I believe we can all agree on is collaboration, transparency, and accountability. Let's make equity non-negotiable. Students' voices central and evidence our common language. With Superintendent Gould's leadership and a board willing to show up, as those of you did last night, we can have a year where the headline is simply, "We Put the Kids First." Let's write a season we can be proud to re-watch, one where our students are the stars, our educators have what they need to help them shine, and where policies hold up under the lighting. Thank you.
Perfect time. Alan Sarviness.
Good evening, Chairwoman Fless, MSAD eleven Board and new Superintendent Gould. I appreciate your time tonight and I'm sure like everyone, it's pretty exciting to have kids rushing back to school to learn and you're here to set policies so they are guided in the right direction. Tonight, I wanted to address two things on the agenda. One is policy A C A, which is Gender Neutral Language. Having the policy in itself, especially with that title, when I read the policy, I'm not sure I come up with that title naturally. That title seems maybe, I'm not sure why it has a title. It is nondiscriminatory and you have nondiscriminatory policy. So you don't, I don't believe you need the policy, but just by having that policy, you're putting a chilling effect on your students and your faculty. And considering I talked to multiple people who work in your district, they don't want a gender-neutral policy either because they don't even know what it means. So avoiding putting your students and faculty in that position is important and I ask that you take it seriously. Second is the MSMA Resolution Packet. If you find one of the resolutions being revised is about supporting, not supporting tax money being siphoned out of the school district, which seems like it's a, let's say, an answer to the new Federal Choice School Program, but I want the board to know that that Federal Choice School Program is open to school boards and public schools and it's coming from private funds, which they get a tax write-off, well, not a write-off, a tax credit. So if the MSMA or MSBA wants to help you all with your budgets, which, you know, there's thirteen still outstanding, they shouldn't be even signaling that they're against the Federal Choice Program because this district, this board right here, could reach out to an SGO if the governor opts in and actually receive funds from that program. So this resolution, I asked the board to have your own resolution and make sure that the MSBA is not signaling that they oppose a program which you could directly benefit. Thank you.
Review and approval of the Agenda Minutes, prioritization of items, and alterations to the established Agenda Format sequence as needed. Motion to approve. Second, Linda. Questions or comments? All those in favor? Excellent. Approval of minutes of previous meetings, regular school board meeting of August 1st, 2025. Got that.
Me and Molly.
Yeah.
Molly.
The girls on the left.
All right. Questions or comments? All those in favor? Motion carries. Recognitions and celebrations. There are none listed, however, the recognition and celebrations is everyone who's here tonight and how grateful we are that you, that you're here, to our returning staff, that you all came back, and to our new staff, that we hope you'll find a home here and it's everything you hope it would be. So, thank you. Correspondence. As written. Looks like there was only a policy meeting. So, policy.
So, policy meeting last month and reviewed the policies as listed there. We went through, so you can see, I hope you've had a chance to review these, student handbooks. Administration in the Absence of Policy, C H D. Student Handbooks with C H C A A. Gender Neutral Language, A C A. Hazing, A C A D. Grievance Procedure Process, A C R dash R. Educational Philosophy Mission, A D. School District Goals and Objectives, A D A. And then A D double A. School System Commitment to Standards for Ethical and Responsible Behavior, and A D F, School District Commitment to Learning Results. We do have another policy for second reading and I'd like, what I'd like to do is come back to that. What I'd like to propose, Madam Chair, is a motion for, to accept that first reading as a bundle.
That's a great idea. So, motion to accept the bundle? From Megan and Michelle. Thank you. All those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you.
And then, we have a policy here, which is the Student Use for Cellphone and Other Electronic Devices Policy, J I C J. And it's listed here for a second reading. We'd had, we'd advanced it for a first reading last month and then had significant other commentary around it and around how it was worded and specifically about that it created more access for middle school grades, six, seven, and eight, than the current practice allows. So, what we did last meeting was to send it back to the Policy Committee, which we met just an hour ago or just before this meeting and we reviewed it. What we'd like to do, I think basically is, I think everybody has a physical copy of this updated policy. We did make changes to this policy, J I C J, which would create a policy for like zones of use that we saw last month for high schoolers, ninth through twelfth grade. And that's what the policy says. P K through eighth would be basically restricted to having any personal electronic devices in their backpacks but stored away during the day. This, the review we just did in the meeting a few, just a few minutes ago, clarified teachers would still have the opportunity to say, to communicate with parents, say, from the middle school to say, "We're going to use the devices on this day with your permission." So parents would be notified and then have permission to say, "Yes, use it for, you know, a science class." But it would otherwise be back in, back in the backpack. So, a couple other things. There is a state law that is coming out that basically, well, the state law is that every school district must have a cellphone policy. So we do need to have this active. We could take more time with it. I feel like we really wanted to honor the committee's work. We had an ad hoc committee that met multiple times, seven times last year and did a lot of research and had ended up going, you know, coming down on one side with the middle school but had agreed on everything else. The middle school was a little bit of an unknown. I don't want to pick on middle schoolers here. Our recommendation is actually to use this policy so that middle school will continue with our current practice, that they will not have general access to cellphones in the day. And that'll be, the access will be clear for, for high school only. So, what I'd like to do is put this policy forward for a second reading. Essentially, I think I'm also looking to waive the first reading for this, even though we, we had one first reading, sent it back. Now I'm jumping back ahead to second reading. Superintendent.
Yeah, I think you've covered it. With the exception of that, at the, on the very back, on page four, there's an implementation and review step that doesn't really appear in our other policies, but the committee felt it strongly that we needed to live the policy and make sure that we incorporated a process for reviewing it to see how it really feels and works in application in the buildings.
So sooner, and one of the things Policy Committee does is review, make sure that policies are reviewed on a four- to five-year basis. This would kind of kick it into more of a sooner review. So probably next, you know, August or maybe the end of this year even, to see how this policy has been. Make any recommendations for changes at that point.
But even if we got like two months into it and found that it was disastrous, we could change it then. We don't have to wait, right?
Right, we would still, yeah, see what's working and what's not. Again, this one, I think mirrors closely what we're already doing. It just kind of, it codifies it, right? It makes it a policy so that we're in compliance with the state law, which is, we have a sort of a deadline for that coming up in the next few months, but we're, we've already done the work and just making this kind of small adjustment to what we saw last month. So I'd like to make a motion to accept this as the second reading for policy J I C J, Student Personal Electronic Devices Policy.
Second. Joanne. Any questions or comments? All those in.
Is this only to accept the second reading? Are we voting on the policy to set it in place? I have a few questions about the policy. So, the significant change I see is that now the use of cellphones can be eliminated and wristwatches as well, all the way to eighth grade. Correct? Okay. My concern is that, as I see the, as it's written, you have these red, green, and yellow zones and all kind of policing requirements. Have you spoken with the administrators that, in the high school and the teachers in the middle school, that are going to have to be the police force looking over this? I mean, this, I'm looking at this and I see, wow, how are you going to keep an eye on all those children? All this, all these different areas and under all these different times? Did you get feedback from the high school, from the administrator?
So I believe the ad hoc committee did have that.
They did.
Yes, thank you, yeah.
And administrators on the committee. We had seven meetings. They're all available online.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, my opinion on cellphones is that we as public officials and parents and grandparents and educators, we need to get cellphones out of school eventually, all of it. This is a start. I hope a review comes within a few months that will, that will take this policy all the way. I think it's time to rip the Band-Aid off and lead the way. You know, the law, the law of the L D, well, thirty-four, I think is, that simply said you have a policy. Your policy could be, "We have no policy." That's the way the state of Maine works, you know, so. I, I'll support this policy with reservations, but I, again, I think the real problem is we need to, we need to step up to the plate sooner rather than later and end it all, all the way across. But I like what you did up to the eighth grade portion of it. I think that is a great step forward. I'm done.
Yes, Michelle.
In terms of the state member, pre-k degrees, students may have personal electronic devices stored in their backpacks, but they must be off their useful name and put away. Where are their backpacks? Are they with them? Are they in a cubby in the hallway? What does that look like in this scenario?
It could look, it could be that the student has the backpack at their feet. They could have, they could be wearing the backpack. It might be in a cubby, it might be in a locker. So it could look any of those ways.
And if the student has the electronic device in their pocket and it's off, is that acceptable if as long as it's off?
The expectation is that it's not on the student's person, so would be tucked in a backpack.
I do, I do like, I do like the changes that have been made. I also was really impressed by the email that we received from, I think it was the sixth grade teachers. I work in the mental health field and I do understand the impact of cellphones, um, addiction. I don't adults, let alone our children who don't know how to regulate. And, and we've heard several times where the studies show that, uh, cellphone interruptions can be more than one a minute. So that, that is really important to, to teach our children regulation. I, I just, I, I'm really caught and I don't know whether to vote against it or abstain. Because I, I also feel that if a child wants to have something in their pocket and their parent, and their parent wants to give them appropriate boundaries, um, as in keeping it off, I'm not sure that we should be legislating what they have on their person as long as it's private, as long as it's not disruptive. So I'm struggling with this and I just want to put that out there.
One of the things, uh, during the policy committee meeting, we had Angela Hardy come to the podium to just walk us through what the process looked like and some of the feedback, um, that was discussed throughout the process of the seven meetings. And one of the things that she shared with us at that time was that overwhelmingly, there was support for on page four, the consequences for policy violations, because that does streamline and, and state very clearly what happens if there is a violation to the policy. So that came directly from the representation during the policy. Sort of speaks to your concern, Michelle. Um, so I wanted to just mention that. As opposed to currently, we've got cellphone expectations written into school handbooks. And there can be a difference between what those violations look like and how they're handled. And, and I would invite you, Angela, if, if you would like to contribute anything, unless the board objects to, to come to the podium.
I just reject because we've been over it, like, many times.
I understand.
It's available online. People need to watch things when they're not here.
And I would just say, if the phone is off, it really doesn't matter whether it's in the pocket or in the backpack. The problem I think teachers have is that if it's in the pocket, it's not actually off. And the disruption to the vibration is part of the problem. So if it's off and it's in a backpack, it's no different than if it's off and in the pocket. But there's less that the teacher has to do to kind of monitor the situation.
And if I can just add in, I think this is part of why the review piece is built in there. And I, I, Michelle, I hear what you're saying, um, that there, and I think that was, um, evident from the committee too, that there was a lot of dialogue around where is that balance, right? And Jeff, I hear your point too, that, um, there's a lot that, cellphones, you know, don't add to the school day in a beneficial way. And, and again, that's, that's the, the balance there. You know, for me, that, I like the idea of being able, you know, intentionally coming back to it, having it built, built in to like review what's worked, what hasn't. Uh, and again, I know the committee put a lot of time and effort into this and, and then we made, you know, this other adjustment.
Another statement. My daughter-in-law is a school teacher, high school teacher, and she, I, I asked her, and she said, you can't believe, believe how creative students are about hiding and concealing and using cellphones when they're not supposed to be using cellphones. So that's why I brought up the policing thing is, this is, you could, well, like I said, I'm going to support the policy as written, but I, I can sense, and I hope we have a review of it sooner than later.
Could we establish a review at this time? Could we say that this would be reviewed in three months? I, I, I love the idea of cellphones not being in schools, but this is, this is more than policy. This is kind of a cultural war, you know? It's a, it's a cultural thing that students now have cellphones now. And so is there a way for us to, to set a time for a review? When we can all come back and discuss this and, and what works and what didn't?
You mean approve it how it's working tonight, but then review it in three months to see if it's working or to assess?
Just to check in.
Well, would if, would I have to make a secondary motion to add to the policy that there'd be like three month reviews? And then we would approve that motion and then approve the policy from there?
It's already in here though. Do you want to review the usage in the middle school or the high school?
Um, I think across the board, maybe, and get parent feedback.
I wonder about bringing this to, if I bring the question about the timing of the review to the administrative team for a recommendation. I, and I bring that, um, to policy next month as a recommendation. And then through policy to you next month. I wonder if that would get at what you're recommending or suggesting. With the, with the feedback from the boots on the ground is the part that I want to make sure we.
Yes. And I think also, that would also still, it would not run us so close up against the deadline that the legislature has set for us. So we do have to respect that deadline and also know what works. So can we, can we sort of like table this second reading and set a time and for review and then implementation?
We can't do it without implementation.
We won't have a policy, so then we'll just be in three months saying, oh, nope, we're not going to do it.
Sorry, maybe I, 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 I'm not really sure how, so if, if Katie, if you come back to us and say, the administration feels that a review in this timeframe would be appropriate. And then we write that review timeframe into the policy. And then we pass it next month. We're still in the timeframe for the legislative, um, requirements.
And what would the purpose of that act? We, we've done a lot of those actions already.
You can't enforce that without a policy.
What would administration be reviewing? Because if we don't give them the policy, they have nothing to enforce it and then know how it's working.
Right.
If we build a consistent review policy, a review timeframe into the policy itself. And we set an expectation that the efficacy of this policy will be measured in three month increments.
And have a policy, so we have, we have already accomplished having a policy for state, so we're not against any deadline.
It says the policy will be reviewed by M S A D eleven administration and the school board as appropriate to ensure effectiveness and relevance. And so sure, surely it would be totally appropriate for a couple of months. Somebody to let us know how it's being implemented and what it, what it's like. But that's, I don't see any reason to hold up the actual policy. We really need to move it along at this point. And then if it's not working, then we can revisit. But I think that the, um, a lot of people have put a lot of hard work into it. So what we have is like a pretty solid policy. And if it, whether it works or not, that's, that's something that we find out after we use it.
Yeah, we can't have any data if we don't have to have a policy.
Need to raise hands, sorry, Linda, yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't see yours, but.
I would like to think that an administrator's meeting, given that it was a new policy, this would be a topic of discussion. Maybe not the first month, but by month two, that this would be a topic that you would discuss at the meeting. Excuse me, and if there were issues with the policy, whatever they are, non-enforceable, not working, whatever, it would come back to the board. Is that a reasonable assumption?
Yeah.
So then there would, just by logical happenings, we would be looking at this periodically if it's brought up by administrators.
Does that make you, does that make you comfortable, Michelle?
No, I, I don't think I'm making myself very clear. This says as appropriate to ensure effectiveness and relevance, and I, I would like it on a schedule. I would like it, you know, standards and measurements are on schedule.
Yes, Jeff.
Discussion should be around accepting the second reading or not.
Right.
This is another item altogether.
Correct.
I would like to move the question.
Is that seconded or do we just?
It was, I have a first by Megan, a second by Joanne. All those in favor of moving this policy forward? Most abstaining. Motion carries with one abstention. Yes, Jeff.
Now, I think appropriate discuss, if we're going to ask for a review within a certain amount of time, I think that's a thought.
And I would leave that to Tony. What do you, as the policy chair, I think.
I mean, I think, yeah, we could do a three month, I actually, actually, we're getting into a little bit of, I think, Jeff's concern, which is that how is it being policed? How's it being monitored?
Right.
Right? And so I want to be mindful of what we're putting on administrators, so I do want to leave it a little bit to the administrators. I think sort of that three month window sounds okay to me as a way to check in. But I also don't want to, I mean, I think that can be, you know, part of your administrative meeting and maybe either Superintendent, you bring it back. Or, uh, if Director Hardy would want to bring it, I don't want to put you too much on the spot, actually. But, um, would, would that sort of fit with where we're at? Sort of like within the next three months, so it could be a month, it could be two.
Before the winter break.
Uh, before the winter break.
Sounds good.
I think it's natural and reasonable to expect that that will be part of our conversations. It's how the actual implementation of the policy is going.
Yes, right, yes, people will have thoughts.
Yeah.
And if we don't have a policy in place at the beginning of school, like right now, it, it will be really hard to start three months from now and, and enforce it. It would be really wise of us to, to start, start hard and soften.
Yes.
If we need to, or start hard and harden up. But to just start, so that we have the beginning of the year, here we are. Okay, perfect, excellent. Uh, no, no wellness, no sleeping reps, although they're here.
They're here and they have a report.
Come on, I love it. All right, take it away ladies.
Sure. So homecoming week is coming up soon, from the fifteenth to the nineteenth, where there's going to be a spirit week, finishing off with a pep rally and a homecoming parade, which I'm really excited for, along with a bonfire near the outdoor classroom. Uh, we have a similar one last year run by student council and we're very excited to put that on. All of this really soon into the year. We don't have a lot to discuss, unfortunately. But student council has been working really hard, along with homecoming and, uh, putting together that spirit week, um, where people dress up and then have a lot of meet days, which is really fun to bring everyone together. And then Kira has some senior activity.
I'll start off with K through nine starting on Tuesday and ten to twelve starting on Wednesday. And it's been a really nice start to the school year. There's been a lot of positivity out in the high school that I've seen. And new years for grades nine and ten are September twenty-second to the twenty-fifth. And hopefully the scores keep going up because we saw higher, like a increase in better scores last year. And Ms. Arnold and Ms. Bishaw are working on a fundraiser where students are like five parking spots and then can take them at the high school, so that's exciting. And then senior activities are starting off strong. On Tuesday morning, student council hosted a senior sunrise on the turf and there was a very good turnout.
Senior sunrise, something new. I'd never heard of that, but I did see lots of pictures and that's so cool.
We did it last year. I don't know if they, they don't have before, but they did a sunrise and a sunset last year. So we're on track to do those. Looked super pretty.
Yes, the pictures were great, really nicely done. Thank you, ladies. That was a great surprise. Uh, no administrative reports. You guys are off the hook.
They're here, that's the report.
You are here, the report is that you're here and we're so grateful. No ad hoc committees, general information?
Just.
There's a lot, new hires. Do you have leaders?
And you can see based on how colorful your updated agenda is, that we've been working right through to earlier today.
I was going to say, so the blue is that today and the red was before.
Which color?
Revert, revert. Yeah, red and blue. Yep, red first and then additions in blue. We were going to go green next for the record. We made it to press in time.
Keep it moving. That's awesome.
Yeah. On page four, very top item, Chad Stryce, I see he's no longer a volunteer. Is that a paid position?
A stipended position, yes.
Nominations. Oh, I'm sorry, Joanne, I didn't see.
How many total positions do we have still at this point?
We have quite a few. I will actually talk about it a little bit later. Nomination, nominations. We have a few here. Emily Hersom, uh, part-time Title One literacy specialist. Cheryl Brigham, uh, teacher in the learning lab at our middle school for math. Jennifer Boulay, licensed clinical professional counselor at Helen Thompson School. Zachary Selden, math teacher at the high school. And Amber Morrison, social worker at Pittston Randolph Consolidated School. I recommend all of these.
So motion to approve.
Motion to approve as recommended.
Second. Yes, Jeff.
Well, just an observation, I'm, we're paying a math teacher less than a social worker? Should I, should I have odd feelings about that?
It is based on their experience. Both of those positions, uh, fall under the collective bargaining unit for teachers. And so based on their experience, their salary is reflected on the number of years. And their education, excuse me, bachelor's degree, master's degree. So we had a motion and a second?
Yes. Motion carries. New business.
New business. Consideration to approve the addition of an ed tech, uh, in special education, a position to support a student funded through state reimbursement. If you remember, last month, we added an ed tech position for a student we were bringing back to our district from a special purpose private school placement. And so this falls under a similar situation. Sarah Bolduc, our director of special services is here. She's walking to the podium now and, um, can provide a little more detail.
Music play.
Thank you, Sarah.
Um, so we receive reimbursement from the state for state agency clients in our district. So those are students typically in foster care. And we have a student that has joined one of our buildings that requires a substantial amount of support. I'm one to one to support, one to one to support. And we're allowed to get reimbursement for that in its entirety, um, through the F S O four. Um, so we're proposing that we provide that individual, uh, a new, it would be a new position. Um, so a couple options, we, we have talked about what would happen if that student moved. Because sometimes these students do move from school to school. And we try to keep, um, students in foster care for us a third year. That's the preference. Do they have continuity in their education, but if we can move someone else, we have two options. So one, if it's the year position, we could let them go, um, or we could move them to another opening. We typically have other ed tech openings. We typically have other ed tech openings last year that we filled at some point in the year. I think we're filling maybe in March. So we could move them somewhere else, or we could let them go. Those would be our options.
It sounds like this would be essentially budget neutral as, as proposed, that it's going to be reimbursed. And then just one other, how long does reimbursement take? Is that?
A year. Andrea could ask exactly. I do the reports to the state and the money funnels through the business office.
It's a slow reimbursement. And it would be budget neutral, provided we continue to build the state for the students. However, considering the number of open special ed positions at this point, I'm confident that we could absorb that for the remainder of the school year.
Thank you.
You need a motion to approve the position? So make a motion to approve the position.
So.
All those in favor? Thank you.
I'm worried voting on this would provide a conflict of interest with my other job, so I'm just gonna abstain.
Okay, update on our girls lacrosse co-op with Haldale High School. Nate Stubbert, I'm going to invite you to the podium to give us the details about this. It would be a change for next year.
Yes. Alright, so for years, we've had a cooperative team with Haldale for girls across. And they have informed me that this will be the last year that they will be with us for the co-op. They have some seniors who want to finish out their career with us, so after this year, they'll be, they'll be done. So this is more of a notification than anything else.
How many players do we have, Nate? Plenty, that's what I assumed, okay.
I think the reason we formed with them originally was to do them a favor.
Gotcha, very good.
And they're gonna leave and go with Coney.
Interesting. They're gonna wish they'd stayed.
Right? Wow.
The reason they cited is because a lot of their younger players played with a lot of the Coney players. So they just feel more comfortable going over there. That's the update on girls across.
Look at that face. I know, it's just like, whatever, right?
Discuss.
Not like we vote on it, it's happening.
Oh, thank you, Nate.
You want me to talk about homecoming and the parade and bonfire?
Sure, out of order.
Well, it's on there.
It is out of order. Is everyone okay with talking out of order?
You're out of order, Nate.
Yes, that would be great.
Okay, so this year, we are going to have a homecoming parade, hopefully. I'm saying hopefully, I'll give you the details in just a second. For the first time in a long time, since I've been here, I mean, this is my eighth year. So I've applied with the city for permits to have a parade. I submitted that application back in July, and then I met with the chief of police two weeks ago and the fire chief. And we decided that our route is going to be from the middle school to the high school. And it's going to take place on Thursday, August eighteenth. There are no games that night. I've kind of re-read the schedule to. Sorry, September, September eighteenth, Thursday, September eighteenth. It will start at, teams will get their floats together at the high school, then bring them over to the middle school. And the parade will start at about six forty-five from the middle school and come to the high school and finish, begin at the high school. After that, the bonfire will take place at seven o'clock. So my application was put in back in July. They canceled their city council meeting for September third, which was supposed to be last night. So they don't have a meeting until the seventeenth, the day before the parade is supposed to take place. Chief of police, fire chief, they're in full support of it, so they don't think there will be a problem. It would be very unfortunate if there was a problem because everybody will have their floats hopefully done by that time. It would be a lot of work for, for nothing. So the hope is that it gets approved and everything's fine on the eighteenth. With the fire, with the bonfire, we're kind of in a similar situation as well. We don't apply for that permit until the day of. Obviously, conditions are very dry, so the fire chief is going to contact whatever agency he needs to contract, contact to be able to get approval for that fire and assure, assure them that they are going to be there with trucks. They're going to water the area down prior to, so hopefully there won't be any issue with that. So there are some moving parts, there are some things that need to happen, but the hope is that it all goes without a hitch.
What could go wrong?
Right. It'll be fine, it'll be fine.
Yeah, you're gonna probably ask what I was gonna ask. Go ahead, let's see. Go ahead.
You mentioned floats would be built by teams?
Yes.
Rather than classes? All students participate?
Fall sports teams are, are gonna have floats.
Okay.
And we've been told because of the route that we're taking, we can only limit it to fall sports teams and we can't have any walkers. They all have to be drivers because that route's pretty busy and they don't want to shut it down for more than five minutes. So. So once they get to West Hill Road, they're gonna go, I mean, fire and firearm police are gonna lead the parade. They're gonna go relatively quick for a parade down there until they get to West Hill Road and then they'll slow it down.
What about fall clubs or just athletics?
Just athletics, right, yep. And that, that was the, that was the conversation, is we, we're only limited to a certain number of floats. And if we open it up to all the clubs, then it's gonna be
Yep.
way too many.
Macy's Day Parade.
Yeah.
What is our number of floats?
Seven.
Okay.
Seven, eight or nine, somewhere in that ballpark. Depends, there might, there might be a couple that built, built in floats. It depends, seven right now.
Any thoughts? Any thoughts that you have on this?
I think it sounds like a great celebration.
Cool.
And hopefully we'll build on it.
Right.
And we're not gonna burn down the outdoor classroom.
No.
Oh, my God. Please, no.
They didn't say it was near it.
And maybe make it bigger and take a different route. And maybe be able to have it, you know, be a longer, bigger parade.
But since it's the first time in a long time.
We'll see how this first year goes.
I have one final question. I'm looking, looking at Angela. She knows what I'm gonna ask. I've already seen people complaining or asking about pep band at the games and the parade. I assume it's still not happening because we don't have enough enrolled students. And we don't have that. So I just want to say that publicly, so that people that keep asking, like, they think somebody took it away. We haven't had it because we don't have enrollment for it.
I'm gonna have faculty students.
Thank you.
To form a pep band.
Thank you. Very good.
But I, if I remember correctly, I think that Mr. Walker said that there were some kids that might be interested. And I would think that they should be in the parade. I'm just gonna put that out there.
So I have talked to David Walker about that. And he said he was gonna try to get some together, but I told him they've got to be on a float.
On a float, right.
Yeah, they've got to be on a float. They gotta be sitting on a, on a trailer while they play.
Right, yeah, cool.
Like those hollow well, elderly people that sit on. In the nicest way. Community bands.
Oh, my. Oh, my.
All right. That went off without a hitch. I love it. Sorry, everyone, I just didn't know what to tell.
Oh, see, yeah, we jumped out of order.
We jumped out of order for Nate, so now we have to consideration to approve a community craft club at Gardner Area High School.
Yes. So we have a new proposal for a community craft club. The proposal is to have a community craft club, which would provide a space for school members to come together to serve the community through crafting. The advisor would be our high school librarian, Katie Jones. So the thought would be for students and staff to work together on projects of their choosing and have the opportunity to serve and connect with their community through craft projects like bulletin boards or displays, maybe working with different local businesses like the nursing homes and kind of building those connections for students. We want to increase kind of some community service opportunities for our students through crafting and giving them the opportunity to work with staff and community members on these projects. It'd be budget neutral, so we have all the supplies that we need. And it fits well with our strategic plan because it would help students feel valued by giving them a chance to serve their community and connect with community crafters and local businesses. It'll also encourage school and community connections, and as we develop, we hope to expand our community organizations and collaborate on different projects. And it also targets the goal of student mental health because crafting is a good activity that helps with regulation, calming, and just creating a, a community for some of our students with that interest. And it connects well with our work of our library of things, so we're expanding our library, so not only books can you rent, but things. So we, like I said, all the supplies would come through that budget and our current school budget. And the club would be working to meet weekly on Fridays, flexible on the days depending on students. Right now, we have, we hope to have at least ten students, but we can accommodate more. And we would be looking to kind of, like I said, help within the school on different crafts or if community has crafts that they would like assistance with, marshments.
Oh, I would motion to.
Second.
Do we need, yeah.
We're gonna do this. Motion and a second, questions or comments?
Can I please donate the clauses for this rapid paper?
I'm sure they would welcome that.
I think it's a great idea.
And would they have an opportunity at the craft fairs around Christmas time to sell the wares?
That's a good idea, yes. So if you've come to the art extravaganza, we do have students that have sold some of their artwork. So we have a.
I also wanted to add on to the discussion that I discussed with Mrs. Jones earlier today about the crafting and how it's not exclusive to just the Fridays and that they could also take home like a little bundle so that they could still participate in the crafting, even if, like myself, have a bunch of other obligations on a Friday morning before school. So I also wanted to add that that is like really optional for everyone to be a part of, and I think it's a great opportunity.
And then kind of having some of those projects for the students to think, the study hall or some free time can come into the library space and work on the collaborative project together, so it's something.
Excellent.
We need to vote. So we had a first motion from Tony, second from Alyssa.
All those in favor? Crafting awaits.
Here's some fruits of their labor.
That's awesome. Initial ed staffing support.
Yes, so you've seen the blue and the red names on each of the pages of our agenda. We are getting creative to make sure that we are staffing at appropriate levels as best we can to meet student needs. And Sarah, we invite you back to the podium to share more information about our staffing model.
So at this time, someone had asked about openings earlier. Special ed has a number of openings, both in teaching and with our education technician. So as far as teaching goes, as of a week and a half ago, we didn't have special educators in either Pittston Randolph or in Riverview. Pittston Randolph, we've been trying to fill for a while and we're working. Riverview had a late summer resignation. So we've done some creative things. At Pittston Randolph, we took an excellent ed tech three from somewhere else. We relocated them and buddied them up with an ed tech three at Pittston Randolph. We have several staff members that are duly certified who volunteered to supervise and support. Let me rephrase, volunteered. They're willing to supervise and support. They're, they're going to need some additional compensation. We'll talk about that in a minute. So we have some duly certified general education teachers that are willing to supervise and support those education technician threes who are allowed to provide instruction in, in that manner. So we have spent the last week with our staff at Pittston Randolph developing schedules that support all students at Pittston Randolph in a beautiful way. They've really come together as a team. They're still able to provide small group instruction. They're getting support from colleagues along with our coaches. And Pittston Randolph is in excellent shape at this point. With regard to Riverview, we have relocated one of our inclusion specialists. So our inclusion specialists are the people that do paperwork. They set up the IEP meetings, they facilitate the IEP meetings, they write the ready notices, they write the IEPs. They do achievement testing that we're required to do. They do observations, transition meetings where we're moving students between buildings, those sorts of things. We have taken one of them and moved them to be the special educator at Riverview and have also spent the last week with them, coming together as a team, building schedules that support students. We don't know how we're going to cover her position yet, but we have some ideas. So with regard to the Pittston Randolph, we have two teachers that are willing to take on that extra work. It would be above and beyond their typical work day. Some of it, they would flex their prep time, so they, teachers have prep time in their day. They would consult with those ed tech threes during the prep time during the school day and flex their prep after school. And we're asking that we compensate them at an hourly rate. We think that would reflect the work they're doing in Pittston Randolph. As far as the inclusion specialist work goes, the assistant special ed director and I are trying to figure out how to meet that need right now. We haven't figured that out yet. Questions about those two developments? High school is the other place for short special educators. Haven't, we have been in this position before six twelve. So if you all remember, historically, our middle school has had a really challenging time with staffing for about eight years now. There have been years that we've had ed tech threes in positions, years we've had open positions and people have taught larger groups than typical. So we've been in this position before, the high schools in this position this time. They had some late summer resignations that we haven't filled yet, and we're still looking to fill. We have pivoted, last spring, we pivoted in ed tech three to math. Pivoted another ed tech three to literacy this summer. And we still have two special educators up there. What schedules are fully built? We'll figure out what additional layers of support need. Because special educators are capped to thirty-five students each, and that includes if they're supervising in an ed tech three. So the, the text, students count as their students. So once everyone is slotted in their schedules for the, the drop, we're going to have to make sure that we do something similar at the high school. Everyone has services. We're not missing any service providers. It's the first time, I think, we get to give that update to the boards. We have occupational therapists, speech and language pathologists, physical therapy, B C B A are all filled. Nice. Social work as well, yeah. So that all those pieces are filled. And with regard to ed texts, we, we had some late summer resignations there. We've had a number of interviews. We'll continue interviewing. I think we have four set up for next week. And we're filling with subs where we can find consistent subs. But that's where we're at with ed texts as well. Katie, did I miss anything that you?
We have identified funds in order to pay the hourly wage for the, for the teachers supervising the education technicians providing the instruction.
Because for sure, the special ed teaching position, we're able to pivot those funds for now to cover those pieces.
Sorry, it'll draw from another position, basically, that we've.
The old position.
Yeah. Can I double check? We had the, what happened with the inclusion, inclusion specialist there? We.
We have moved her back to be a special educator.
We pulled her on for one thing and then.
It was an involuntary transfer so that we could provide services to students at Riverview that she has graciously accepted and is rising to the challenge. We don't know how we're going to do all her paperwork right now. We're working on that case.
Thank goodness. You were tier one, so you have a little bit of leeway for the next audit.
Our audit results were excellent, but we're hoping to continue that.
The, we'll be able to draw, what's the, like, well, the risk is that we're drawing money from one position, but then we hire that position. Then that, the, the support compensation needs to come from somewhere else, right?
Are you part of Andrea? I know I checked with her because she understands finances much better than I do.
That's why we have that fund.
So there are benefits, again, salaries that we're not paying for currently that we're going to support. If we did not have unfilled positions, we wouldn't be able to accommodate this without cutting somewhere else. accommodate this without cutting somewhere else. Our budget's pretty tight. Ask you.
Miss, I actually forgot steps. Um, we've historically not been able to fill the steps teaching position. And our special educator out at Helen Thompson hasn't had enough room with her caseload to supervise and support that. Has agreed to do that. She has agreed to do that again this year. Um, we're going to try something different this year. We're going to post the steps teaching position as a one-year ed tech three so that we can, Andrew's nodding, I bet. Um, a one-year ed tech three position to see if we can fill that. Um, and hopes that we'll post again this spring for the steps position.
So from what Andrea just said, does that verify what Tony being said? If these unfilled positions are going to be paying, if that position gets filled, do we have space in the budget?
If the positions get filled, we would no longer need the additional hours. So those, everyone would revert back. And when the rate that we'll be using to pay, to compensate the teachers will be the teacher rate in the CBA.
I'd be interested in making a motion to approve the, I think the key one is to approve the, the supervision stipend, are we calling it, or we?
Consultation and support.
What I think, because I had to do it myself the last couple of years, particularly we've had other places that I've done it myself. I'm actually thinking that's probably where we'll end up at the high school this year is that I'm at the high school to do that. So.
We have motioned to approve, provide the funds for the compensation and consultation, sorry.
Any more questions or comments? All those in favor? Great. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Sarah. Good, just, good, great description of a really complicated puzzle.
Okay, uh, let's see. We're, we still need, or we do need, we talked about this last month and we were just going to move it to this month. A person to be the delegate for the main school board association delegate assembly. It's important that we have computer skills, whoever that is. Um, it's a Saturday, uh, September 11. Nope, it's in, it's October. Uh, Saturday, October 18th at nine 30 a.m. and it's virtual. And then there's a, a regional meeting on Thursday, September 11. To, um, to go over their resolutions for the delegate assembly. So I would love it if somebody would volunteer to do that. You will? My gosh.
It's riveting, Janelle.
It is riveting. Well, it's, it's, it really is really, it's very informative. It's
Good to go to.
It's good to go to. So, thank you. Agreed to do that. Um, the rev- revolutions, resolutions are in your packet. So if you can familiarize yourself with those and if you have questions, feel free to reach out and, uh, questions or comments? And then we can, at our October board meeting, I would also request that board members read through the resolutions. Um, so that when the delegate assembly happens, we can represent, um, what the feelings are of this board. So.
Is that conference that we went to last year still happening?
Yes.
Usually October too.
It is at the end of October. It's the last week of October. You won a prize last year, right?
Sage dip.
Sage.
I mean, they're not candy and.
They do have a lot of good swag.
Yes.
There's lots and lots of swag. So yes, yes, you'll be going. That's so exciting. I'm so glad. Um, let's see. And then we need to set a date to tour our facilities. Probably that would be a good idea. Once we know, um, who's going to fill the West Gardner seat and then what's going to happen in November? So something after the first Tuesday in November.
That was usually on a Saturday, correct?
Yes, uh, we do it on a Saturday and, uh, Gabe carts us around in a bus from place to place. We're lucky, somebody brings donuts and coffee. And for not, there's no donuts and no coffee.
Helping don- helping donuts.
Election, Thanksgiving, Christmas. Could we, um, maybe the first or second week, uh, weekend in January? We get through the election. Get through Christmas.
The second week in November, right after the election. Before the weather gets questionable.
Once it's cold.
The calendar for a date.
It sounds like we could sort of table it until that, the November meeting and kind of decide, but it sounds like.
Yeah, already been October next week.
Are there any dates before January that you would available or?
If you want to go into December, that's, that's great too, but. Yeah, maybe.
So yeah, we can decide in December, the Saturday, the sixth.
Isn't Saturday the sixth?
That is like, like the Palooza for holiday shopping at every elementary school.
Fair capital of the calendar year.
L E R, Pittston Randolph.
There's no interfering with tradition.
My form approved, okay, in a way.
You know, right?
We can fit all the craft fairs in.
Yeah. Right? Oh, yeah, man, they jump around all.
December 13th though.
December 13th. So we, and we need to be concerned about sports on Saturdays.
Not that early, not, not, not second week in November.
Okay, perfect.
December, yeah.
Six, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we need to worry in the December.
December, yes.
Yeah.
Could we do it on a weeknight? Maybe we.
Yeah, there we go. Let's do a doodle poll. Well, no offense, but Gabe's the one that also needs to check his schedule. That's the doodle poll that's one year, when you can do it. I know.
I'll make it work.
Well, I prove that we wait till October.
We'll decide in October.
Let's decide in October. Nobody is like, nobody is coming up with anything besides. We'll decide. We'll figure it out.
Well, and again, if we wait until December, we're going to be looking at sports until February. So that's going to make it, we really do need to.
I think since we can't do it again in the spring.
But I mean, you're really talking about probably middle school will play on Saturdays. So I can tell you, December 13th is our big wrestling tournament. That's an all-day thing. So you probably don't want to do it on that day.
Are there enough buses to take everybody? How many buses go for team sports?
Well, it depends. On, on a Saturday, we don't have a whole lot of games on Saturdays. In the winter, it depends on the day.
Okay. We'll decide at the October meeting. Let's push it off. We pushed off delegate assembly. We'll push off the tour. But we're not pushing off the donuts. Okay?
Okay.
Lastly, uh, actually, I don't think it's a, uh, I just received a text message. We do have a West Gardner appointment. So that's great news. Uh, so we will have that person with us in October. So, yeah, we do need to wait. Because that person needs to go around too. So can you say the name? Kate Merrill was selected. So that will be, that's a very good thing. Her dad is a former board member, as everybody knows, and much beloved in the community. So that's, that's a very exciting thing. So we'll wake up, welcome Kate to be with us next month. Pardon me?
She's going to sit next to me.
Well, so it's funny. I was, when I was, there's no, she just told me that there was a chair here. That's why I said that.
More space.
Oh, no, that's fine that you did that. But it's really weird that, that, and Andrea, we did this when we bought this dais. It doesn't really fit everybody that needs to be here. That's why Andrea doesn't sit with us anymore. It's because.
What used to be here was like jets and chairs and old clunky desks.
Oh, it was awful. Yes, it was.
Remember Linda? We sat at them.
Yes, so.
Yeah.
But when, when we're looking at, at configurations, it not, it, it's just really not quite big enough to, and this side always has one more than that side?
This side might be able to compress a little and.
Well, that's what we've always said. So it happens. So that's how it happens. Yes.
Up here, so. Yeah.
We'll make, we'll make room. The downside is there's all girls over there.
That's nothing wrong with that.
Girl power. So that'll be great. And the last thing I want to, um, in my report is, um, you all received, uh, an email about seating, um, from me yesterday, which prompted Michelle to write something about me flagrantly bullying her if I was to sit her next to Joanne. Um, and there's a question in there that you can always ask. I want to, I want to put it out there. If you have a question like that, please call me. There is a method to the madness of the seating in the room. And it has nothing to do with you. It has everything to do with, are we representing the community altogether? Separating people or coordinating the seating chart? There's a chart that Martha keeps upstairs. I set the chart. I give her the paper. I never touch the placards again. So when you come in, if your name isn't where you want it to be or where it is supposed to be according to the chart, move it and put it there. I understand that you asked for Sean's seat back in May. And I asked you at that time, is it permanent? And you said you didn't know. He didn't resign until July. So I'm sorry that you feel, um, targeted.
In order, I believe that you are venturing into a territory that is inappropriate since I requested the seat to the medical, a medical accommodation.
Absolutely.
And that is not necessary for the public to know. And the fact that you're even bringing this up is not appropriate.
In your opinion, it's not appropriate. And when I spoke to our attorneys about bringing this up at all, the attorney said, I could ask for proof. And I said, I don't want to do that. I just want to be clear that the seating in the boardroom is something that I do. I don't do it to hurt anybody's feelings. I don't do it to strengthen anybody's feelings. I do it so that when we sit in this room as a group, we at least give the appearance to the district that we can all work together. And it's insulting and hurtful to Joanne to signal her out in a, in an email that is public. It's insulting. You don't want to sit by her. We get that. Now everybody gets that.
Right, only because you just brought it. Cause that email that specified that I didn't want to sit next to Joanne was only to you, Katie and Tony.
No, no, everybody got it. I didn't forward it to anybody. Everybody got it.
Oh, incorrect. That is, I only said this to three of you. But in any event, in any event, you are violating my medical privacy at this moment in front of my entire community. And you're okay with that?
No, I'm not okay with.
That this should, conversation should stop right now because you are violating my privacy and you are bullying me at this very moment. I was very encouraged when I came in and I saw that my medical accommodation was honored, as was Jeff's continued medical accommodation. But now you're making an issue.
Order. No one has brought up any medical accommodations.
Nobody.
She has not said those words and I had no idea this had to do with medical accommodations. And you've just said something about another board member.
Correct.
Apparently involved in a medical accommodation. Please stop bringing that to the table. That is not being said. Can we move on?
Absolutely. So you all know how the seats are set. We need to at least give the appearance that we work together and we can sit next to people that we may or may not like. That's life. And that's life in the adult world. Moving on. Thank you, Molly. I appreciate that. Superintendent, talk with us about opening day.
Opening day at Johnson Hall last week was awesome. It was a high-energy event. We packed in the house. We have, uh, thank you that we have given. And, uh, I'd like to just make public to Mike Miklon, who opened the doors for us. Helped make sure we were all set up. He entertained us. We had Pat Hart. Welcome all staff back for the school year. And we had a performer, Dennis Price, who, uh, had us all belly laughing. So it was a great, great event. Uh, big thanks to Angela for behind the scenes planning, pulling it all together. We had community partners in attendance. So, uh, all staff members, as they filed into Johnson Hall, could see them, uh, there. And so it was super exciting, followed by pretty rigorous schedule of workshop, training, staff meetings, time in instructional spaces to get set up last week. And, um, we are back. We've had, uh, three days back and all systems go. Students are looking happy. Staff are looking ready to be here and refreshed. And it's just, uh, you know, all of our buildings, the community, the energy, the air just takes on a whole different feel when students are back in session. Transportation is running smoothly. Uh, we are in great shape despite some of the internal challenges that we've acknowledged tonight. Staffing unfilled positions. Uh, we are setting the course for an awesome school year and I'm really excited about that. Staff vacancies. We have a number. Sarah addressed a few. We have a bus driver position or two. We are waiting. There are some interesting personnel things. Um, it's always the case because we need medical clearance and if kind of the process for bus driving is unique. And so we do have an open bus driver position. We have, um, two special education teacher openings at the high school, two education technician openings in special edu-, uh, special education at the high school. At the middle school, we have a special education teacher opening. We also have the head custodian opening. Please correct me because things.
We don't have a middle school special ed teacher opening.
Thank you. Things are moving so quickly that, um.
So there's the green print.
There's that green revision. Thank you, Sarah. Um, an ed, an education technician opening, um, in special educate, uh, excuse me, literacy at Helen Thompson School. Education technician, special education, uh, two openings at Helen Thompson School.
Two ones. And then the three that we moved the teaching position to a one-year three position.
That's what's listed here. It might not be what was just communicated. Thanks for clarifying, Sarah. Uh, we have that resource room position, the special educator position at Pittston Randolph School that we discuss, Sarah discussed, we're covering with the education technicians and the oversight by staff at Pittston Randolph Consolidated. And then at River View, we have an education technician two for special education. What's not reflected on the list is that we will continue to try to hire that special educator. It's not on my list because we're currently filling it with our inclusion specialist. So we are confident that we can, can fill these positions and that will change the staffing model. Again, as Sarah referred to, it was not until March, I think it was March last year when we got that last position filled. And so hopefully it won't take us quite that long to fill them. Um, I wanted it on your radar that the custodians have reached out to begin negotiate, the process of negotiating their contract. That's currently a three-year contract. So I just again want that on your radar. We're still in the process of finalizing negotiations with the ed tech and administrative assistant unit.
And they don't want to join them. What's ed techs? The custodians don't want to enter contracts.
No, no.
Still.
Um, the school-based health clinic, I have just a brief update. Nora Diversi, our head nurse at the high school, who, who facilitated the advisory committee in its planning phases or earlier planning phases, has sent an invitation to members of the original committee. We have nine confirmed members of that advisory. We have nine confirmed members of that advisory committee right now. And we are looking to add student representation because we have medical professionals, staff, administrators, parents, community partners. And again, we're looking for student representation on that advisory committee. We have a first meeting scheduled for that advisory committee on October seventh at five thirty p.m., that will be at the high school. I have an update on our buses, this is an exciting update. We, as you may recall, lease our buses through SEER. And we are due to replace, have all of our buses replaced next summer. We have, SEER has five new buses now, so over the course of the fall, we're going to be upgrading. You'll be seeing shiny, brand-new buses on the roads throughout M S A D eleven, and that's a really exciting upgrade for us. And this has been a fantastic partnership for us. And then really briefly, without going into a lot of detail, because we have administrators who need to go home and go to bed and rest up for the first Friday of the school year tomorrow.
How bad could it be?
Thank you, we had nine board members who completed the survey. It's not too late, I do check every couple of days, even though it's been a while since I sent it out. There were seven questions on the survey, it's very general, general information I was looking to collect to kind of figure out how we can improve communication and have and sort of an exchange beyond what we have in the, in the boardroom from month to month. So the first question was, what events have you had the opportunity to attend? And the most frequent answer was drama productions or a play that eight of you had said you had attended, in addition to a fundraising event at a school, so craft fair, book fair, something going on to support a school within the system. Core themes from the strategic plan that are clearest to you all currently are the themes of school and community collaboration and educator sustainability. Coincidentally, the other three themes within our strategic plan all ranked the same, so we have like three themes tied for second place. We have strengths listed as our community positivity, dedicated staff, school spirit or community spirit. I'm paraphrasing by a lot here. Challenges that we, that you all are feeling are the most pressing. Polarization within the community, turnover, staffing challenges, mental health of our students, parent participation, disruption within the board process and meetings. I think all of those fall within one of those categories or another. There's a feeling that communicating and collaborating within the board is somewhat ineffective, which again, this is not the most informative information, it's just a starting point. And as far as identified priorities, the responses that I received were prioritizing the students, education, promoting the positives, following the strategic plan, the voices of our students, reading, writing and math, anti-bullying curriculum, and making sure that our initiatives align with values within the community. And finally, your responses indicate that additional training, information or support in curriculum and legislation would be most helpful at the time of the survey. So thank you for that, there may be some follow-up, it's a great and easy way to collect some information from you. That is what I have.
Well, that means there's bedtime for all of you.
It is?
It is bedtime for all of you. We don't need a motion, but we are in here.
Who drives the bar vest? What administrator drives the bar vest?